Says I need to cut back on my political activity. Those that know me know that sometimes I don't listen very well. So, just letting you know that, yeah, I did survive the operation. I'm surprised at that. And anyways, so, maybe it will make me feel better and I can come back with a little bit more zest. So, so far, West Goshen, I mean, had problems with parents dropping off kids on the wrong side that I can see. That's a good thing. I'm not paying attention to West. I'm not paying attention to my side. The parents that do pick up their kids on my side building, if they come from the park, I don't care. At least they're getting some exercise in. By that time, they're gone. They're not in our yards. That's what counts. So, hopefully, we can have a good thing. Hopefully, our budget isn't going to break my bank. Remember, some of us are on social security. We've already paid our dues in. We're paying up in taxes. The city has already done exact another 105 just to let me drive, probably to driving on the road. So, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And with that, that will conclude our public comment this evening. We'll move on. I have three, which are our superintendents' reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll start out and have our financial commitments. Dr. Evans has a few things to review with the board.
Right, well, the third quarter report is before you. Things are running smoothly from where we are. We're at, we've expended 72% of our education fund, which, you know, you want to be less than 75%, so we're on track there. I would say a thing with the operating referendum. Our expenditures are right on track. We get our revenue, remember, for the operating referendum and for debt service and the operations fund. That happens in June and in December, so the revenue is a bit low on those, but the expenditures are on track or they're within range of what we projected them to be. So, there's, all the numbers are here, and I guess if you wanted to look at them, I guess another thing would be the education fund, 87% of what is expended is spent towards staffing. That's about right in line with where we need to be. So, if you have any questions, you can feel free to shoot them at me now or wait till you want to ask Jim, and I can shoot them back to you some other time.
Any concerns at all?
Not this year.
Not yet. It's coming. Any other questions for the board members? I always think that, right now, prior to changes from Senate Bill One, the biggest pressure will always be in our operations fund. And so, that's, we're working through that always, so. Okay. That concludes our financial commitments. Student achievement commitments. We have some checkpoints. Javi, Lori, I'm not sure who wants to start, but I'll turn over to you guys.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, checkpoints. If you are, if you remember, we, it was a pilot last year. It is not a pilot this year. So, I learned, we have a summative assessment at the end of the year, but the state has now given us three chances. Checkpoint one, checkpoint two, checkpoint three. Their windows are between seven and 12 weeks in length, and so, we are in the middle, actually, towards the end of finishing our first implementation of the checkpoints, the first window. We should have some results in the next couple of days. As soon as everybody's finished, we can tabulate that a little bit better and do that. Of mention is, we are taking the checkpoints a little bit earlier compared to last year, following, you know, kind of the idea of teaching, having an opportunity for kids then to have some reteaching. The checkpoints, each of them give us a second opportunity, so students, as teachers, at teachers' discretion, they can opt to take checkpoint one a second time after some interventions and stuff. It is not mandatory that they take it, and I know that some great level, some schools will do the second opportunity. Others will probably elect not to do that, so that's kind of where they are now, and if you want to touch on...
Just what we would expect is there's some kind of intervention, right? They're using that data. It's actionable. Whether they give that checkpoint again or not, that they're responding to the data.
Any questions for Javi and Lori? Teams are digging in. Okay. Next up is our operational excellence commitment, and Dr. Metcalf has a couple items, actually, three items, I think. So, Dr. Metcalf?
Couple things that are happening, again, kind of all tied together. Board Docs, which has been our board organization software, will be fading out in January, and Diligent, same company, a new updated program will be going live in December, or January. One of the things, one of the reasons we're not already switching goes to my next point, which is Neola. Neola, we have gone through all our policies. We have updated all our policies with what we feel would be beneficial. Neola has them. I know Mrs. McCrendle has been in touch with Neola numerous times, asking where's our packet, because it shouldn't have taken this long. It's taken long enough that we have been able to get all our administrative guidelines set. So, as soon as the policies come back and you have your opportunity to read, to look at, and vote on and adopt, we will be ready to implement. So, we're very pleased about that. Last thing is negotiations. Negotiations has concluded with the Goshen Education Association. We feel like negotiations went very well this year. They are on schedule to ratify on Wednesday, the 29th. Thank you, the 29th. We feel that we are very pleased with, one of the focuses we had was teacher attendance, and we felt like some of the proposals and some of the things that will be added to our contract will help us, hopefully, really make sure that our teachers are aware of attendance and incentivize attendance. And so, that, with that, that is it, unless you have any questions.
And then, we would look to approve the contract the following Monday.
November the...
Third.
No, 10th.
The third is the...
Oh, the public meeting.
The public meeting, okay.
And then, the 10th, either the regular board meeting, it would be approved.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
With the Neola, are they responding to us saying when we're going to get it, or is it just an open-ended, someday will?
Last week, when they were working on it, Board Docs was having some technical difficulties, which kept them from getting it all done in time. We should have it by now, so I emailed again, and I'm waiting for a response. I haven't got one yet. It should be here. We should have it last Monday.
We'll get it to the board members as soon as we can. We feel like we're behind. We've been done a long time now, and we're waiting for them to just get them updated for us, so. Good question. Any other questions for Dr. Metcalf or myself? Well, next up is our people commitment. Start out with parent engagement and...
Yeah, I have several updates. So, the first is that on September 9th, our family engagement community members met, and they were able to give feedback to the website, which we were hoping that they would do. And I'm pleased to say, when we sat down to look at their feedback, it really matched a lot of what we are doing with the new website and making it more user-friendly and informative. So, that was, that was very good feedback for us. And then, secondly, at the end of September, we had Patricia Wiedeffel come back, and she's an expert in family engagement, specifically around how to communicate well with families to keep them engaged, and then also what makes a welcoming school. And so, this is somewhat strategic. If you remember, parent principals had that training, and they're kind of our lead learners, right? We need them to understand those practices so that they transfer to the schools. But then, we were able to have parent liaisons, administrative assistants, and school counselors go through that training. So, now, every school in our district has a team that has been trained around family engagement practices. So, that's very exciting, that our principals can lean on those folks to make that change. And then, finally, we took a large group to a conference last week, and those are our pilot schools. So, they took their team members, and that was even a more intensive training for those schools who are going first in implementation of some of these practices. And so, I'm just excited for how we are going to serve families even better than we already are.
Thanks, Lori.
Any questions?
I guess a general question about the new website. Can we see just even some look and feel of it?
We were, we were actually debating whether we should show you tonight. We know we have some other things going on, but, so, the answer would be yes. We can bring that in or share this. I think we can share the, I know Andrew's not here, but I believe we can share probably a link and let you guys just look around on it, if you'd like to, so.
I'd be intrigued to see how it functions.
Kind of where we're at?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be live at the end of November, like before Thanksgiving? Is that what I heard?
November.
Seventeenth. November 17th is the date we've targeted for going live.
So, we'll look into that, Brad, and see what we can do.
Yeah. Not that I want to give great feedback. I just be interested to see.
Where we're at with it?
Yeah.
It's always an interesting trying to balance the board meeting length, and we bring it in to you. So, yeah, now I'm kind of kicking myself. I should have probably given a little presentation on it. It was ready, so we'll do it next time.
That's fine.
Yeah, there are a few things being finalized, mostly, especially just like the general, like, view of how it's laid out.
Yeah, because I think that is going to be a vast improvement from our current. Like I say, our current one is maybe not as user-friendly.
Correct.
Would be nice about that.
Working on it.
We'll see.
Okay. Nothing else, then, we're going to turn it over to some achievement celebrations, particularly with staff this time. So, Tracy?
Yeah. First, we'll start with Travis Peak. You probably saw, oh, yeah, thank you. Travis was named Indiana Fire Instructor of the Year for the State of Indiana. As you know, Travis has been instrumental with our fire course over at the CTE Building and Chandler Innovation, and so, it was great to see him awarded that for the State of Indiana as Fire Instructor of the Year.
Next, we'll go to, nope. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Kaitlin Yoder Root. Kaitlin was selected as a National Merit Scholar Commended Student. That means she placed in the top 50,000 in the nation, which is about the top 3% to 4%. While it doesn't mean she moves on in the process of a possible scholarship, it is a distinction that signifies strong academic performance, which, you know, is very positively viewed by colleges and universities. So, we want to congratulate Kaitlin on that. And then, finally, I think next time we should see what order they put the slides in and schedule it that way. Finally, boys tennis, we're, again, sectional champs this year. It was a tough match with Fairfield. It ended up being, we won 3-2. However, we did not move out of regionals, but it does not negate the strong season our tennis team had, and we look forward to more in the future.
Soccer's had a great season, too.
Soccer also had a great season, but...
Very proud of our fall athletes this year, so. Next, we do have that is actually, will conclude our reports, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, so then, with that, we will then go back to the board here for board committee reports. So, I will look to my fellow board members and see if anything to report on with the committees or with the student group as well.
We had a music council meeting since our last meeting. I will forward the minutes to you, but we had a kind of a financial update about how they're doing over there, including fundraising and what they're planning for the future. We had a conversation about capital expenses, including marching band uniforms, instruments, among other things that are happening. And a new calendar with updates that they can update more easily and that we can all see what's coming up. So, I will forward that to you.
The Building Trades had a board meeting last week. The house is progressing nicely. They had the trusses are delivered, and I think they were going to work hard to get those put up. This is officially the 50th house that the Building Trades has produced since it's been in existence, and so, we're hoping for some additional recognition from the media and out to the community in terms of this being that milestone house that's out there. The classes, especially the freshman and sophomore level classes, are full, almost to capacity, and we've got a really good bunch of advanced kids in the juniors and seniors that are working on the house, and it's progressing very nicely, so. Thank you.
The Youth Advisory Board and the Youth Focus Board, we met up last week, and we are hosting a costume ride. So, if you guys have any old costumes to donate, there's like a box in the lobby. We're also planning our trunk retreat. We don't know what the theme is, but we're also starting to think about our November drive, and we're probably going to go for a drive for that.
Thank you.
So, probably the biggest thing from the community foundation is the annual trivia night, which is October 28th from 6:00 to 9:30, and that will be at the fairgrounds.
And we do have a team, so I have paid for that, so I am more than happy to take contributions from my fellow board members for that, so. So, it was 300-foot table, so we got six of us that are going to go, so. Get it.
Good luck, by the way. You're going to choke. I forgot to bring the trophy down. I'll bring it next time.
Yeah.
Let you see how it looks. You guys haven't had it yet, have you?
Well, we have, actually. No, we won it two years ago. Yeah, I think it was two or three years ago we won it, so, yeah. Careful what you're saying here. And then, the last committee report, now that you want to talk to Trenton. So, tomorrow is the Goshen redevelopment meeting, pretty full agenda, but there's a proposal on it for another new apartment development downtown Goshen, so, by a local community group, so that's good to see, so I think it has a good chance of being approved. So, it's also there on Third Street, just near the Hawks Building, so. Just more good development, potentially coming to the city that provides more housing and whatnot, so. Board report, though, after that, but it should be a good meeting, so. All right. Anything else from committee reports? All right, so we will now move on to consent agenda items. 5.1, approval of accounts payable dated October 13th, 2025, and payrolls dated September 19th, 2025, and October 3rd, 2025. 5.2, gifts and donations. 5.3, agreement between Elkhart and SEC. 5.4, SEC cooperative agreement. 5.5, Purple Agreement with SEC. 5.6, approval of school psychologist. 5.7, Solyant Agreements with SEC. 5.8, United Health Services Agreement with SEC. 5.9, personnel. Anything we need to highlight off of that, Mr. DePoy?
I will mention a couple things here. You're approving a lot of agreements that SEC has. So, the SEC board is made up of all the superintendents and the cooperative, and this is kind of a plan being, you are the official governing body that approves the agreements. And so, these are, some of these agreements are for school psychologists that we contract with and et cetera, and agreements.
If it was all right, I was going to ask, I know some of them, like the very first one, I think there was one or two others were dated from July, and then, also, it was an agreement between Elkhart and SEC. We're approving that simply because we are?
Because we are the...
SLY.
Yeah, we're the...
Lead Educational.
LEA, the...
ELA, not SLY, sorry.
Yeah, Legal Education Association, right?
Lead Educational Agency.
Agency, thank you. And since it's a cooperative, somebody has to be that, so in this case, for that cooperative, we are that person. So, we approve you all as board, the final approval on a lot of things, even though it's just because of the way the State of Indiana works. It's, we're the LEA, and we get to approve those things, even though it goes through the governing body, which is made up of those superintendents, which is kind of like their board.
Right.
Because the cost of the cooperative gets spread amongst all the different school corporations that participate. And Elkhart has been part of our Deaf Heart of Hearing Program that has been located in Concord, but it's part of, the employees that run that program are Goshen employees technically. They're part of the cooperative, and so, that's kind of how it all works, I guess. We haven't talked much about that, I think. Other than to say that it's changing. This year's the last year Concord and Boggle will be in the cooperative, so. It's going to be Middlebury, it'll be Fairfield.
One-E.
One-E and us, so there'll be, there's four of us, and we're still the LEA going forward.
All right, and with that, the consent agenda items are approved as presented. We will now move on to item six, which are our action items, and we'll start with 6.1, adoption of the 2026 budget. Dr. Evans?
Thank you. What we've been through, the budget workshop and worked all the budgets out, we've had, we advertised for the hearing, we've had a hearing, and now it would be a time to adopt the budget. The amounts that we're proposing for adoption, and remember, these amounts are high because we still don't have our assessed value or some of the other numbers we need, so we protect ourselves so that we can cut it back later. None of this budget would raise taxes in any way. But we're asking for the referendum fund budget of $6.7 million, rainy day fund of $1 million, debt service of $13,953,685. The referendum exempted capital, this is also like a debt service, but it paid for the intermediate school, Education fund of $52,813,000, and the operations fund of $18,500,000.
Thank you, Dr. Evans, for that. So, with that, I will take a motion and a second to open up the item for discussion and ultimate voting.
I move for the adoption of the 2026 budget.
Moved by Mr. Garber, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Oh, I think this is the third time we've looked at this, maybe four or three. So, questions that we haven't thought about, comments as we look to approve this? One of our three main duties as a board is to approve the budget, to set the budget, so just want to make sure we all have the right opportunity to make any final reviews or comments here.
How much did it drop last time, once we'd advertised to the total amount that we actually got? I tried to look the documents up, and I was not finding the exact numbers.
So, I'm trying to make it fairly realistic, but still giving us enough room to drop. So, the education fund, we did, that's not, doesn't drop at all. I just, you get your money based upon enrollment. But I would say, over the debt service exempted operating, operating referendum and operations altogether, if I added them all up, probably close to eight or nine million dollars that it would be less when we're finished.
That's significant.
Yes.
And I think the one thing to highlight is, I mean, we've been very pointed not to manipulate our tax rate at all, because I think that's important. You know, there's a lot of uncertainty with where we're going to be in two years from now, but we're trying to continue to live within our means, which I think is important. Other thoughts, comments from the board? Ready to vote? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please use your hand and say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Passes 6-0. Thank you. Moving on to item 6.2 is 2026 Goshen Junior High School HVAC renovations. Dr. Evans, back to you.
So, we've been working through this bond, and the major portion of this bond would be to fund the second project at the junior high school. We're recommending both of these options to have, to complete the task of the HVAC needs at the junior high for a total of $4,214,646. And the list from Performance Services should be in your packet.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. So, with that, I will take a motion and a second for item 6.2 to open for discussion and ultimate voting.
I move for the passage of item 6.2, 2026 Goshen Junior High School HVAC.
Moved by Mr. Glip, seconded by Mr. Goodman. So, this is coming out of the bond we approved, like we approved a month ago, give whatever.
Right, and it'll be finalized at the next board meeting.
When I read the proposed improvements, I want to, is it the part of the building, the original town crest part of the building, or is it the, would it be the sixth grade wing that was added in the early 2000s? That's what I, that's the only part I was trying to verify.
I'm going to let Dr. Metcalf answer that one, because honestly, I don't know which was the original part of the building.
I believe it's not part of the original town crest part, and I believe it's the actual, basically, from the, this year, we did the classrooms, the main classrooms, both first and second floors. This would take care of everything down the music toward the aquatic center, plus also the gym, the two, because we do have two gyms there, it would also include that also.
Then, I'll say they need to work on their orientation, because they're saying the south end of the building, that's the north end of the building.
Unless there's, unless there's more to go on.
And the media center, so I, I just wanted to, that's why I was just making sure.
No, I, I know that...
Jan's motioning that you're right.
I'm right.
Oh, you're right? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh.
Okay, so this is the original building, built in the 50s.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I didn't realize it was a three-phase project.
It'll be done over two years.
Okay.
What's the lifetime expectancy of the new system?
Usually about 20 years, but depends upon the system. This one has gone well past that life expectancy.
Yeah, I would, I would have to believe what we're looking at here was put in maybe in the early 90s.
Yes, I think it was a part of the big renovation that happened in 90.
Yeah. That thing's been renovated a few times.
I understand. I was on the board, it was the late 90s.
Okay.
They helped put it in because they put it in a stupid...
Well, we appreciate that.
Historic.
Thank you. Other, I guess... Other, I guess, questions from the board, that we've got our layout correctly? Ready to vote? Good, good, alright, so we have a, a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same side, we'll pass this six zero, thank you. Alright, so with that, that wraps up our action items, so let's go to the fun stuff, discussion items, so we will start with seven point one, which is a redesign of the Goshen High School Campus, and we'll invite Randy Zimmerley, I will say.
Couldn't be anyone more exciting than Randy Zimmerley to come up and talk to us about, uh.
Good to see you guys, glad to be here.
Need some help?
Uh, sure, you know, pass those, take one, pass it down, uh, basically, I stopped in to see Jim, and Jim asked him how it was going, and he said, "Well, we've got all these things going on at the high school, it'd be kinda nice if we could get a, kind of a, a plan figured out," and, uh, so we sat down and we came up with an idea to, to kinda pull a group together and, uh, try to get everyone on the same page as much as possible, uh, as it relates to the main campus, so the focus of everything that we did was looking at just the outside of the main campus, and, uh, a few things kinda filtered in as it related to inside the building, but most of it was outside, so the first thing you've got to do is, we've got a little homework for you, so Brad, you don't have to do this cause you did it as part of the process, but what we'd like to do, everyone who's, uh, willing, is to, uh, go ahead, and we're gonna take a quick weather report of your perception of your main campus, so if you're a board member, uh, if you wouldn't mind, we'd just like for you to write down on those lines there, or if you're a central office person and haven't participated at all in this, uh, in this process, I'd like you to go ahead and just write down your perceptions of your main campus, uh, could be positive, could be negative, could be just alterations, so it's just basically a weather report, so we're gonna give you about two minutes to do your weather report, so you start right now, that'd be fine.
Like park, parking, bussing.
As it currently is.
Whatever you've experienced on the out, yeah, this campus right here.
We've got about thirty more seconds. You're still writing, that's fine, uh, we'll just move forward, but, uh, so basically, when, uh, was talking to Jim a little bit about, well, what were some possibilities, how could we maybe get a little bit of a handle on what's taking place on the main campus, different things that are floating through, different ideas that are happening, but then it was like, well, if we do this, then we'll impact that, so the idea is, could we come up with a vision or an understanding of what we want this main campus to ultimately look like, maybe twenty, twenty-five years from now, and create, uh, in essence, a master plan, so the overall goal, if you look at the middle there, kinda set up two meetings, one meeting was, uh, could we just define our current situation, so basically do this weather report activity, and then after we do that weather report activity, could we come up with what we really believe about our campus, and what we really believe about what would make a nice area for our kids and for our community, so, uh, we are not going to take a lot of time to go through all of the items that are on here, what I did is I provided you sort of all the steps we went through with the committee, so that you as a board could look at it and get a clear understanding of what took place, okay? So the first thing that we did, if you look at that front, the bottom, the front agenda there, everybody did a weather report, just like you did, okay? Now the difference is, and we're not gonna take time to do it tonight, is that after we had our weather report, and we clarified with each other, we talked about it as a whole group, we put it up on a, put it up on a board, and the results of that weather report, if you turn your paper over, all those weather report items are on the back there, okay? So when you look at your weather report items that you just put down, one of the things that we want you to do is to say, were my items that I just put down captured by the group, and if they weren't, this is your input time to let Jim know to say, "Hey, when we did the weather report the other night at the meeting, I didn't think anybody wrote this down, and it was, it was on my mind," so this is an opportunity for you as a board to now get involved in this process before the master plan is actually, actually put in front of you as a recommendation, we want to get your information, wanna get your thoughts, so, if you didn't have time to go all the way through that, and you wanna go through it, or you read the weather report items from the group, and it prompts you to say, "Yeah, but this also," those are the kinda things we want you to, uh, let Jim know, so that, uh, he can get those captured, so then after we got our weather report items in the first meeting, we said, "Well, why did we put that down as a concern? What do I believe that prompted me to put that down?" And so we came up with belief statements, and if you look at the bottom of that third page, you will see the belief statements, so those were belief statements that the group came up with. And that was the end of meeting one. Can you turn over to the next page, meeting two, basically, we brought, uh, group back together, we sent out, uh, minutes of the first meeting, said, "Hey, these were the weather reports, these were our belief statements, where are we all at now?" So, the first thing we did is we went back and we rechecked our belief statements and we rechecked our weather report, were there things we wanted to add, oh, I'm sorry.
I just got a text from someone watching.
Oh, okay, were there, were there things that, were there things that we definitely wanted to, that we wanted to add, or we wanted to revisit, so that's the first thing we did at meeting number two, so we, uh, reconfirmed all of our stuff, we moved the, the, uh, things from meeting number one, and then we started talking about, okay, if these are our beliefs, and these are the things we're concerned about, then let's start talking about, well, what are the decisions, what are the things that we actually have to, uh, talk about, so we came up with what we would call decision points, what are things that we really need to do, so again, if you look over on the next page, the summary of meeting number two, basically, we reviewed those issues, we checked on our belief statements, and we found that we had some focus areas, so we were focused on, okay, we wanna use this main campus for student activities, but right now, it seems like there's a lot of adult activities that are taking place on this main campus, could those adult activities in a thirty-year lookout, could we make decisions that would possibly move those adult activities off of campus so that we could have more student activities on campus, so that was one of the, uh, things that we started looking at. The other thing that came out really strong in the weather report, as well as in the belief statements, and it certainly was evidenced here, you have great things taking place here at Goshen, but when people, and this was from your group, but when people drive up here and enter the parking lot for Goshen High School, does that experience, does the curb appeal of your parking lot, does the outside and exterior of this building send the same message, that this is a place of excellence, is this a, this is a place that's well cared for, are we taking care of, and I think there could be a million, a lot of reasons why, you've acquired properties over time, now it, maybe it's time to look at it and say, "Okay, now how can we turn this into a very aesthetically pleasing place?" So, as we got to the end of that meeting, one of the things we looked at, well, what are, what's the, what's the timeline, what are the important things, and so if you look, uh, down below, when you look at immediate consideration, the recommendation, and this also came from an additional meeting that, uh, Bob, Alan, um, Jim, and then also, uh, Andy, and also Karen, as far as with Barton Covilma, where we were able to sit down and we started to look at, well, what are our immediate things that we might want to consider, and then what are those future things that we might want to make sure that the master plan does not prevent us from doing something in the future, uh, as far as being short-sighted, we don't wanna put in something here, and then five years later, wish it wasn't there, wish it was somewhere else, so, uh, we wanted to come up with a, a definite plan there, so if you look over on the next page, if you look at the summary of decision point activity, so what do we feel could really impact the master plan, so we look at the top, what are we doing with the warehouse, are we keeping the old warehouse, are we not keeping the old warehouse, are we gonna put any money into it, are we not, uh, if we have a future field house, where's that going to go, transportation and maintenance, the garage is here, but the bus parking's there, so those were just an example of items that we started to look at, that then, when Andy and Karen started to look at the whole plan, we said, "Okay, let's try to come up with some idea and save some places for these things," okay? And at this time, I'll turn it over to Andy and Karen, and they can share a little bit, Jim, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add?
No, it's just been a great process, I think, appreciate Barton Covilma and Randy, your expertise in leading our group, and for those who participated in the group as well, uh, clearly, we would just want you to feel when you come onto our campus, this is a place of excellence, and we don't wanna have to redo something and waste money, so we wanna make sure when we do something, this is where it should be and how it should look, instead of solving a problem that's short-term, we wanna think longer-term, so appreciate everything you said, I would say yes, good job, thank you.
Good, uh, now you did have some homework, and don't forget that we wanna capture your thoughts, especially if they're not covered by what you already read that the group covered, and, uh, you know, it might be that you look at it and you think, "Yeah, they captured everything I would've said, if I was part of that group, that's great," but if not, make sure you let Jim know, so, taking all this information, then, uh, Karen and Andy, do some work with it, so I'll let them.
And Karen and Andy, we have, uh, copies, but also, we're gonna put them up on the screen.
That'd be great.
I think, oh, there we go, you just tell them which one you want, I think they'll toggle between whatever ones you want.
Yeah, we can start wherever, I'm Andy Bearman with ANZ Engineering, uh, work a lot with, I'm, we're civil engineers that work a lot with, uh, Barton Covilma, so a few clarifiers to begin with, um, this is kind of a, these are jumping off points with, with ideas, it's not anything set in stone, we have to do a lot of coordination with the city, um, they have not had any input on this yet, it involves public right-of-way, public utilities, neighbors, everything else, that we are fully aware of, that we need to involve everybody in these, I'm gonna go through them quickly because you're not really committing to anything tonight, what you're gonna see is basically two versions, uh, two options, and there's two versions for each one, there's a long-term vision, and then a short-term plan, and like Randy said, we just wanna avoid rework in the future, and that's the reason for that, the main difference between the two versions, or the two options, I'm sorry, is how we treat Tenth Street, whether we go straight through with that and use gates and other things, or if we take it around, so what you're seeing with this plan right here is the long-term vision of taking St- Tenth Street, keeping it where it's at, straight through, and then around there, you'll basically see a lot of parking, and then at the southwest corner of the building, there is a building addition there that could be a CTE, uh, facility in there, career and technical training, um, that could be right out front, and I'll let Karen speak more about the building additions, but, um, some office additions and canopies right out front where the front entrance is now to get the offices near the front, and at the northwest corner, uh, we're showing a field house or athletic facility at that northwest corner, and that kind of, um, stays consistent through these, again, those may move, but the rest of what you're seeing out there is even, it's, uh, showing displacing this administration building potentially over to Chandler, um, to the west, just as an idea, again, to get more parking on this campus, and then also, um, demolishing the warehouse transportation building along the west side of the property, moving transportation over to where the transportation parking is now, which then displaces JV Baseball, and been looking at ideas for that as well, so that is very quickly what is going on in this, this plan here, go ahead, this is the second option, which basically, alls it does is changes where Tenth Street goes, and it goes around the main central parking lot, uh, we find that it's important to keep the connection on Tenth Street at both ends is, is what makes the most sense from a public intersection perspective, we believe that that's what the city would like to see, and it kinda makes the most sense, uh, for you guys as well, is to keep those connections on Tenth Street and use those as main entrances, and with this, there are some advantages and disadvantages of either option as far as stacking space on the property for cars, there is, um, you know, student drivers, uh, walking through the car rider lane, and other, you know, drawbacks and advantages, um, looking at each direction, we have a lot of time that still needs to go into the internal traffic, we know that's a big part of what we are talking about here, so we wanna get it right and get everybody's buy-in on it, I forgot to mention that one of the other big changes we're talking about is moving the buses to the east side of the building, which adds a lot more flexibility to all of this, it helps with safety and flexibility of things that we haven't had up until this point, I think it's a, it's a big deal to be, be able to do that. There are short-term plans, but do you wanna talk more about the building additions?
Um, and as, as Randy introduced, I guess, what is shown here in the orange for potential buildings, that sort of came from the list of the committee of all the different things that may want to happen here, again, none of this is proposed as anytime soon, but trying to make sure if, um, we do start some parking improvements or entrances to the campus, that we wouldn't put anything in the wrong spot, um, you all know that your campus is very landlocked, so trying to see how, if you did need some bigger additions, such as the field house or, um, transportation building, CTE, how do those fit, and one of the goals of the committee was trying to keep as much connected to the high school rather than going across parking lots or going over to Chandler, um, so, that is sort of a reason for why those things landed where they did, um, and then, one thing I think Andy didn't draw attention to is making sure that, um, we put some nice, um, entrance arches and more of a gateway, and have a nice boulevard feel to these new entrances, um, along Tenth Street from Madison and Pearl, to, um, really get that nice, you're entering the Goshen campus here, um, use the new canopies and new offices, uh, make it clear that people, guests know where they're coming when they come into your campus.
So we, have you noticed that, it's on the picture that you have in front of you and up there too, the gateway arches coming, uh, off of Madison Street, and then also a gateway arch coming off Pearl Street, we wanted to make it feel like, hey, you're entering a, like, this campus of excellence, and, uh, similar to, uh, when you go onto the alumni plaza in the back, like, when you come down Pearl Street, it's lit up nicely and it's very professional, like, something like that, I think, Karen, that's what you were talking about, and, um, just that, that curb appeal for the campus, and also, letting you know, where's the front of the building, this is confusing, we have people not knowing how to get into our high school, they don't know where the front of the building is, so.
There's good places for monument signage along here, um, there's also some decorative lighting you could do with banners, things like that, but there, there's the potential for, for having a lot of wayfinding in here as, as well too, to make it more direct. So again, this is a short-term plan for keeping Tenth Street, um, where it is now, directly through the middle, and this short-term plan shows, uh, office addition and canopy out front next to the building, and then some parking where there is. And then some parking where there is lawn area now and some of the properties you've purchased. We've also shown a unified football field at the north end that we're still discussing on the correct placement of that as well too. But we're trying to, you have to prioritize where you want parking in relation to the building. So this is kind of the closest to it. But again, within, we have to look at pedestrian crossing paths. You know, this exercise shows us where there's conflict points with arrival and dismissal traffic that will want everybody to, to think through. And we may have to do a different situation with islands, with gates, to get the right patterns that we want, the safest patterns that we can get on here.
Part of, part of putting the field to the north too was again, the beautifying the campus thing. That's where all those old lots are now. Maintaining that green space that you have, but you know, making it in a more desirable location.
We call it the unified football field, but it's unified football team uses it. Marching band will use it sometimes. Sometimes there'll be a group of students that come out there and play frisbee golf or frisbee, ultimate frisbee. So it's, it's used for a lot. It's a nice green space. We want to maintain that if we could. I thought, well, let's move that down the other end instead of right here.
Same basic setup except for again, this kind of winds the boulevard around the parking lot. And it's still up for discussion how that's handled on the west side. You know, if, if it's setting it up for the future project, we may not put the financing into doing some of the boulevard on the west side, say. But that's still up for discussion. But it's the same basic premise. It's just meandering 10th Street to, and really the reason for that is to keep people from cutting through there. At the same time, it's, you can have gates, you can have speed bumps, speed tables for walking across, things like that to deter traffic going through if you wanted to do one way or another.
Right, you know, board members, one thing I want you to look at is a short-term plan. Notice that none of the buildings are torn down. All the buildings are in existence. This is just maybe some tweaking to the parking and some archways, kind of a lower entry level. But it could expand. Future boards make decisions to add this or add that. We put placements for that on what we, with our crystal ball thinks that might be there in the future. It, it will, it will far exceed the time that we, well, maybe some of you will be on the board for a long, long time. But chances are, these will be decisions for future boards. But we wanted to have a plan that we don't do something, then oh, well, that entrance can't go there. Now we have to go here. And/or other things. We just don't want to have to redo things and I, you know, many of us, and I, board members I've talked to, many of you have suggested the same thing. It feels like we don't have a plan, a master plan for this campus. And so that's great work that we've, in relationship with Barton Covilima and Andy, I always forget your.
ANZ.
Okay, thank you. You guys do great work and, you know.
Well, I think we have to remember, our campus is 102 years old. A lot has changed from when it opened. It was the largest high school campus in Indiana. And to, and to think what it is now, how we are completely landlocked. And you know, every time Bob finds there's a house for sale, we try to find a way to buy it. Because we need every square foot that we can. And I mean, Jim and I've talked a lot about this and I appreciate it being able to be a part of this. We have to think about where are those next expansions? You know? We have to live within our means, so we don't want to put things in and like I said, tear it out in five or 10 years. Because that is not being good stewards of the dollars that we've been given. But we have to be prepared for where we want to grow. Because I think if you ask even families of students that are here, they get confused where to go on our campus. And that's, that's not good. So we're not helping our own people and then visitors that are coming, they get, they get very frustrated. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to really deliver on something that hopefully will be here for a really long time.
Any questions for Karen and Andy?
The only one thing that didn't come out that the committee had a strong feeling about, and that was relationship with your neighbors. So getting this master plan to make sure that the neighbors also know, and that was a high priority item that came out that I didn't hear mentioned yet, that, that they really did care about taking care of neighbors and being a good, being a good neighbor to those people. And I think some of those activities already started. Maybe in future meetings that'll come out. But I did want to mention that that, that was a very significant and a, and a high priority item to be, be good, be good.
Everything we want to do, try to take care of our neighbors. You know, make sure that we don't impinge upon them in any way. But make it a positive thing to be next to the school district and, and the high school. So I, I do want to mention to the board one thing. As you look at that plan, you know, future thoughts will be, what, what do we prioritize? How do we, how are we going to prioritize what a project might be 28 or 29 or 30 or whatever? Some of the parking is a good start. And then I, I would say, just from my perspective, something to put in your memory banks, I said this, is the entryway to the high school, I think will buy us more space internally in the high school as well. So, and also give everybody clear entry to the high school. And also bring the counselor's office in the, and where parents come in. Right now, they come in, they check into our welcome center. And then they kind of go through the high school to get to the offices in the middle of the building. And we'd like to move those offices to the front of the building. So they come in and they get to the offices right there. They don't have to walk through the building. It's a safety issue really, that was not thought about 20 years ago. So keep that in mind.
Our entrance changed. It used to be on the opposite side of the building. I mean, you know, we've changed the structure of that building a lot. So when we used to have offices, you came in off of Lincoln Way and walked upstairs.
Yeah.
But it's now handicap accessible, so we pivoted and done a lot of things.
I think that's part of, you know, from the short-term to the long-term, there's obviously a lot of phases and steps in between. And oh, well, if this moves, this has to happen first. So there's a lot that can quickly snowball there, but that's why I think just looking at, you know, initial hopes and goals and then long-term with everything and then knowing that there's obviously a lot of pieces in between.
You can just see how many times the building's been added on to by looking at the roof.
Yeah.
And we'll show you how much this building has evolved over 102 years.
Just looking at this, what, what are we doing with the old baseball locate, baseball site location? What is that used for now?
It's baseball. We, we play JV games there.
JV games are there.
See softball, you can play a doubleheader in the time it takes to play one game for baseball. So softball, they can play, you know, JV varsity in the time it takes to play the varsity game for baseball. Give or take. So we kind of needed JV's field for the kids to play. We could go to one of the parks. We had, there had been some discussions with the little league in the past, but that's not necessarily something that worked out in long-term. I wasn't part of that, so it was long, long before my time. But, so as of right now, we're just, you know, we don't have anything to put there.
Sure.
Or, you know, we haven't decided to spend money to put something there. So in the meantime, we'll just keep using it as our JV baseball field. And so the JV plays there, freshmen play there. JVs, you know, they'll play sometimes at the other, the main diamond. But our conference, they put them on the bus and they come together, they don't split. So it's not, though the JV stays at the, at one school and the varsity plays at the other, they come together and play both games there. Most of our conference teams all have at least two fields that they play on for baseball and softball. Sometimes softball, you can get by with one, like I said, because they just don't last as long. Good question. Any other questions?
I mean, I think the, the, the point is that we need to start having some real feedback about where we want to go. Because we do need to start saying, all right, we want to do that so we can budget for things. So that we then can get designs, meet with city personnel and neighbors. It is a long process. It will take a long time for a basic parking lot to come together. Let alone a, a major addition to our school, so. I appreciate your guys' hard work and your leadership in this. This has been enjoyable. I kind of like this stuff though, so.
Yeah.
This is the fun part.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it very much. As Randy said, if you do have different things on your weather report, please do share that. Because things could have been overlooked that would be valuable to consider.
Yeah, give it to me. We'll get it on there.
All right, we have one, we have one more discussion item tonight. 7.2 school board compensation draft two. So we have, this is the third time we've talked about this. Mr. DeVois?
Yes.
Anything different to look at?
I just, I just want to say, again, remind the board and anyone who might be here not hearing this for the first time. The state has allowed us to give a raise to board members for the first time. And the board was, no, no one asked the board to get a raise. This was my idea. I just think for future boards, this is a good decision. There's, being a board member takes a lot and in no way does the compensation I'm going to, I've been recommending makes up for, for the time you guys put in. But I've come down to after hearing conversations with all of you, that this is probably be my recommendation. I wanted to talk about it, if there's any more conversation about it. Otherwise, I'd like to bring this as the next time, unless we have more conversation. We've got time. I'd like to have it done before January, that's all. I'd like to have the annual compensation for each board member, mostly option two. So if you look at option two, but I would put the caveat, caveat on there that we would do up to 30 board meetings. We counted up, Terry was, went back and dug through, how often did the board have an official meeting in one year? And the year that you hired a interim superintendent and then you hired a superintendent, you had 30 meetings. So I think we don't want to encourage a future board to decide to have 30 meetings every year. But also would like to say, well, if there is a year where you need to do that, that you would be compensated. So I think 30 was a good number for me, a number of me, so it's a hundred dollars per meeting. So in $5,000 for your, for a annual stipend one time and each year. And then a hundred dollars per meeting. If you, we only use 12, 24, then we only use 24. But if we had more, it would accommodate some of that work that the board would, would do. Up to 30.
And for clarifying, i- is that include executive session meetings?
Executive sessions if they're not held on the same night. So it basically would compensate you for coming in for an executive session, but not double. So anytime you come in, however long it takes you to get your business done, whether it's two meetings or three meetings or whatever, that's, we just only pay you once.
When this gets voted on, it would be written as a policy, is that correct?
It would be written as a resolution, I think. I, I had some language from Tim Shelley I asked him for. And he, he wrote it in terms of a resolution. It's been about a month since I've looked at it actually, but, and then you all would approve the resolution that would do that.
I think you might have shared it with us. I'd have to go back and look.
I must have missed it because I didn't see it.
Okay. It was some sample language.
Yeah.
We want to make sure it's specific information in there.
I'll try to go back and my, I might have overlooked the email.
Okay. And, and before you would vote on it, you'd have a chance to look at it.
Right. So it'd be more descriptive than this option two?
Yes. This is just my summary, just for a conversation piece for the board. And I think, I guess what I'm looking for clarity from you all is unless you think, no, 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 Jim, let's go to option one. Or no, 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 let's go to option three. We go to option two, we just put the limiter that I heard. And I, when we looked at it, 30 seemed like a good number, maximum. And then of course, we have to meet at least once a month to prove the things to keep moving as a school corporation. So somewhere between 12 and 30 meetings is, and then we, we want to make sure we define what a meeting is. It would be, you know, a regular board meeting, executive session, and then work sessions. But only, and there you have to have a quorum. So it wouldn't be just two or three of you getting together, it has to be at least four of you getting together, some official meeting. We have to follow the state laws regarding official meetings of the board.
One thing I think is important, and Brandon brought this back up to me and I'd read it and I'd forgotten about it. As we are elected officials, because our annual pay would be 5,000 or greater now, we would legally be required to leave our campaign committees open financially and have a committee. And you would have to do reporting annually of your campaign. So any of us that have run, you've had to open a campaign and track your finances. This now would put us above that threshold. So you always would have to have that out there and have to make filings every year.
It's once a year if you're not actually spending money, right?
I believe so, yes. I, we would all have to confirm it, but I think that's, that is a point that, because I think a lot of people, they, they, they run, they, they wrap up that election year and some people close their campaign. But I, the, the way the law reads, you would now be legally have to keep it open the entire time. That never applied to us before because we didn't meet that threshold, I think, of the 5,000 dollar minimum. We would now qualify. So I think that's just an important thing to be aware of. I don't think that should change opinions, but it's just an FYI. Just more paperwork.
I think I would definitely be in favor of option two over option three. I think option three is complicated.
It's extremely complicated.
I'll get some language to you guys then. Either I'll rewrite it myself or I'll have Mr. Shelley confer with us on that.
Yeah, I would say if, if we could see a draft resolution ahead of the meeting, just to make sure we're all agreeable with what we're seeing, if it's 30, if it's 28, if it's 10. That way we understand how it reads. And then we can either comment on it before that meeting or we can amend it during the meeting. If we ultimately pass something.
Okay.
Sound good?
Any other information for me? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
All right, we've made it to the end. Closing items. Any miscellaneous administrative items tonight?
Sorry, I was making my notes.
That's to you.
Yes, we have parent conference, teacher conferences start tomorrow. So when they.
No school tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right.
So I don't know if Dr. Metcalf, K-12, well, we don't need to announce. You guys know, look at the list and who does what when and, and that sort of thing. I do want to mention that this is the 50th year of our marine biology trip to the Everglades. And it's very exciting. So just want to mention that. And we had a meeting today talking about fundraising. We have a lot of kids, it costs $1,600 for a student to go. And then there's some kids who don't have the funds who are looking at getting donations for up to $800 per student. So if anybody has some friends, relatives or yourself be willing to donate, I think in terms of supporting a student at, at some portion or fraction of the $800 of any, just a thought. You'll hear more about that later. The last thing is, our next regular board meeting will be here on October 27th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Board items, any miscellaneous items tonight from board members? Then we'll have one more chance to haze each other before trivia night.
That's right. Remind me to bring that down out of my office. It's prominently sitting on the top of my bookshelf, the trophy.
All right, so with that, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Mr. Goodman, Mr. Glick, all in favor, can you say aye? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.